So, let's go ahead and call the city council meeting for Thursday, September fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, at seven o'clock. Do you have anything to say, Hall, in order? Do we have a motion?
No.
Chester moved, we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? I owe some carries. Who was consent agenda?
I got four additional invoices. First one is from Hawkins, who bought five going cylinders. That one is one thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars and forty-three cents. And Sandree Fire Supply, fourteen new cylinders we got from Iowa. Was it all yours that day?
This is just like...
Four hundred a piece, we got fourteen thousand, this is fifty-six hundred dollars. Summit Company, they came in and did our annual inspection and actually really checked all our fire extinguishers to replace.
Replaced two, took about four apart and put new stems and stuff in.
Six hundred and twenty dollars. And then Housby was Scott Van Peppel, that's the payloder that we rented for a week out there. It's now called Housby and it's fourteen hundred dollars for a week.
Go ahead.
He said it's one thirteen.
No.
You have to know the most. I didn't get there, no, I didn't.
One thousand sixty, sixteen eighty-five, forty-two.
Eighty-five.
Thank you.
Make the motion, we accept that. We do the consent agenda with the addition of the four bills.
Motion's been made, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Chester seconded, all those in favor?
I'm in.
Make some carries. Lynn carries here, if you're up.
Thank you. Terry Moore, sir?
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, our monthly report for you is dated from August tenth to September fourteenth. We required forty-three hours contracted, we provided fifty-eight point eight. So we got twenty-three calls for service.
Sure.
Everyone here as well, too. It can go either way, so. Any questions from anyone? Issues to take back?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right, part of the team here.
Twelve calls in August, made three SDR calls, three medical inside and pound, three medical township, and three football team guys. I got two firefighters gonna take CDA class, I don't know if you can talk about it. I bet today. Um, because it's not expensive, or thirty bucks maybe, some, I don't know. Don't quote me. And then, uh, we'll be taking a truck down there for one plus two days, so they can use the pump for operations. Uh, we got our life safeties chief will work for us here, no fire desk, and our township. Now I sent you guys all an email about a grant, I don't know if you guys looked through the information, you wanna go ahead and go through it, or? Thousand dollars for the rifle, to write it, they usually get that back in the grant process, like the money. And like next year, if we decide to do another one, they only try to accept your bucks. So I'd like to go for a cascade system, the filled air tanks, because our old system would fill between tanks, like forty, fifty thousand for it.
Do they have to be a grant for the whole thing, or?
Maybe, well, that'd be probably, I don't know what it is for sure, but they're probably about five percent match, or something. Yeah, it's, it'd be a five percent match.
Okay.
On that grant thing, you know, it's a thousand dollars, you know, obviously it's gonna be something that's gonna be needed, because it's a fire department. Either we get twenty or thirty, twenty thousand, that is twenty thousand less than we need. Plus, if they're a thousand, that, I mean, that's, that's on both sides. So, I mean, I think it's a, I feel like Steve, or, I find something like this.
We're gonna go for airbags, because we got twelve years left on those bottles we got, so for the, still, I don't know, time, next year, right, airbag, or, you know, I mean...
In a later date.
Yeah, we'll do it every year. Actually, do it every year.
So we made a motion? What are you, 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 what[497.12]
Basically, our whole neighborhood is talking about it. But, a lot of them couldn't make it tonight, so.
I know there's probably three or four guys that have golf league on Thursday night that would be all in on it. I mean, you're not talking, there's gonna be fifty golf carts at Alvernet tomorrow, but.
Right.
You'd probably have ten or twelve guys that are more than interested in it and, you know. Without even, you know, really asking anybody.
You just know you can't drive much in town.
Right, exactly, which makes total sense.
Absolutely.
Yep. Okay. The central city has where you can't drive it on Main Street and something else. So they do have rules set up.
There's two main roads in central city you can't drive it on.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, with that, we'll go down to the maintenance report.
Okay, um, as you noticed, you approved the bill for chlorine tanks. Um, it was just coincidence that I got, ran chlorine really low at both, uh, chlorine rooms and. Basically, uh, the day that he came, I only had two days left worth of chlorine, so I had him take every bottle we had, even though I lost a day worth of chlorine. But that way, I could take the five full bottles so that we're ahead. So a five sounded like a lot to some of you that've been around for a while, that's why. We swapped out everything we had, so. And we are using a little more chlorine than we did use in previous years. Our numbers needed to be higher, so we could get our tests up where they're supposed to be. So, for anyone who thought that was a big number, that's why. Um, plan on flushing fire hydrants later this month, we'll get a notice out, it's time to get it done. So hopefully, we don't have too much dark water or anything for anyone, but, and everyone sees the notice. Um, so maybe warn your neighbors if you think of it, I don't know when I'll get to it exactly, but hopefully before the month's over.
Is it, how, what kind of notice and how is that notice gonna be?
We'll post it in the post office, um, we can get us something in the, in the Lynn newsletter. Um, basically, all we have to do, we haven't put it in the paper before, all we have to do is post it in two or three places. Hanging up in Lefty's, hanging up in the post office.
I've got like that little lion sign in the middle of the street.
Oh, we could do that.
That's what always used to be done.
Oh, okay.
And everybody, have it up there for a couple of days and have the date that you're gonna do it. And you know what?
It might stop.
If somebody complains, that, they can't read the sign, it says right here.
Yep. No, that's fine, I can do that, that's, that's no issue whatsoever.
Right.
Go ahead.
So. Um, but that's on the, on tap and other, everything with the water system is working fine, so, no issues there. Um, the dry weather is great for our sewer lagoons, we, we don't have to worry about whether we're getting infiltration, cause there's nothing to infiltrate in there. But, uh, I do think we're making strides with some of the stuff we're doing. But it's, the lagoons are, aren't very low, we'll start discharging here in October.
That sewer perfection is gonna help too.
Yeah, that clean out is gonna help.
That sucked in stuff like crazy.
Absolutely.
You're talking about sewers. I stopped over and did a replacement on that bell housing, beginning of the line on Willow.
Yep.
That almost looks like it might need to be flushed, cause it's beginning of the line, it's low flow.
Oh.
Is that something the fire department can do, can they just dump some water down in there? Cause that's really all it needs, it just needs.
You're talking about the cleanup.
Yeah.
Yeah, that definitely is gonna be done after they fix it.
There's little or no flow there.
Yeah, well, it shows.
One house.
It was probably a quarter pipe, just sitting there solid.
Yeah.
But that's from the subject, it's efforts fix, it's gotta be, it must be.
Well, and a lot of that sediment was in that elbow that got replaced. And so, if we sent some water down it now, we would get the bulk of the pipe clean, it'd be a great time to do it. And they put a gradual, when they replaced it, they put a, um, uh, went straight down forty-five piece of pipe, forty-five. So that it, you know, you send a blast from a fire hose down there, it's, it's gonna do some good. Yeah, we can do that, that's no problem. Um, yeah, and the, the manhole lining, uh, now that Moodheart is done, I'll call, you know, they still owe us. We already paid for the Moodheart manholes and they owe, you know, we've got so many feet left, probably four to five holes left that they can do on the twenty-five thousand that was approved. So I'll have them back, they told me last year that if we ever do any construction or just want, see a crack, they'll come touch up. Well, a lot of these manholes on Main, you know, after they've worked on the, the risers, are gonna need some work. Uh, because they've been moved around, they've developed some cracks in the lining up top. So when they're back in town, I'll just have them respray the top part of those, uh, manholes, so we keep a good seal. And so, we, I think we're gonna eliminate a, a boatload of water going to lagoons that clean out, getting all of these. Cause when he gets done with this batch of manholes when he comes back, that will be almost, I think it will be nearly every older manhole in town. You know, previous to the Graham addition and the Naylor addition. We'll have, have lined all of them and there's no way that can't help. So, um, but I'll be calling them now that I see that everything's complete and get on their schedule so they can get here this fall yet.
Working Main Street's actually.
I thank you on my car suspension thing.
Yes, we're getting to another part of that here shortly, but, um. I reported last month the bat wing, we were having trouble with it folding and it really was just a froze up hinge. And after we spent a lot of hours just with the skid loader and oil lifting that thing up and down, it is free. Um, I don't know that there's any way to prevent it from happening except staying after it with an oil can every time we use it. I never in my wildest dream would've guessed that hinge would've froze up like that, but it happened, so. Um, now we know, now we have new, new maintenance procedure.
We talked about mowing the opposite direction, so that might flex more too.
Yeah, and I did, then, uh, right after I got it working free again, I did mow, uh, on the opposite side of the road to let it hang over further and. Hopefully, keep breaking that rust and letting the penetrating oil get in there, so. So that's fixed, um, the paint sprayer worked well, but is gonna need carburetor work. I'll keep that for a ten below zero job this, this summer, pull the carb off of that little Honda and, and get it fixed up. It wants to surge a little bit when it's under load, so. But otherwise, it worked very well.
We just finished overnight painting and we had the exact same problem with our pump and it was foul plug.
Oh.
I never thought a million years it'd be a foul plug. The other thing is, our mechanic told us shut the fuel off when you're not using it.
Yeah, and I.
Maybe you know it.
I do, yeah.
We didn't.
Yeah, well, and that thing goes a full year before it gets used. It sits an entire year and then it gets used and so I, probably, I'm not the biggest fan of stay bill. You know, I, I've seen it cause problems as well as help, so, uh, maybe we need to, you know, empty it, I don't know. It, everybody's got a different thought process on those gas engines, so we'll, I'll do some experimenting, but.
I dumped, I dumped, uh, we got like five transfer pumps we use in the farm and I dumped them all. I, I used the stay bill, I had more problems with fouling plugs and everything else. So I just drained, pulled the bowl off, drained everything out of it. And then, they had, never had a pull the plug, shea oil in the cylinder, pull it through twice and.
Yeah.
They, soon as I put fuel in, the next year, bam, they fire right out.
Yep, we'll get her worked out, I'll figure out if it is a plug or the carburetor and get it, but it, it's running well enough to paint and I have more painting to do, but.
Are we gonna, I just noticed that, you know, you did, that blacktop looks very, very nice with the nude lines. But with all the stuff that these guys with, uh, manholes and everything else, is there a possibility we might wanna touch up some of those toward the end? Is it, is that what your plan might be or?
That, I, I'd love to see a rain on it and kind of, you know, clean things off a little bit and see what it looks like after everybody, all this mess is out of town and. Um, see what they look like, but yeah, we, we definitely could touch them up.
Portable, you gotta, always hit it with a fire truck or something.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm gonna use up all that paint, so we don't have any tip for you.
Well, that's, yeah, but we still have to do the outside edges. I, I need to go over everything once and I'm, I'm working with Marion, we, we ran out of glass beads to put in, you know, that we top coat the paint with to make it reflective. And Sherwin-Williams was out and had no plan to have any more back in and Diamond Vogel was out and had no plan to get any more back in. So I wound up buying a bag from the city of Marion to get us through. And in the process of picking that up, I was talking with Scott, who painted Hilton, and he, um, um, was telling me that they, Marion has just ordered some new stencils. And so, not that the ones at Brian May weren't good, but I'd like to have a bigger word stop. And also the twenty-five mile an hour that I painted, I'd like them to be bigger and more noticeable, so I'm gonna try and arrange to see if we can't borrow those or rent or whatever, those stencils. So, we can paint that, uh, those words on the street and also now that they're putting a new ramp in across Main Avenue at Moodheart. Because we're doing both sides, uh, to be ADA, I'm figuring, I probably oughta paint a crosswalk there too and put signs up. If we're gonna have an ADA ramp on both sides of that particular intersection. Um, so, like I said, I got a little more painting to do, I need to do the center lines going out of town, do the edges going in and out of town. Uh, so there's still painting to do and curbs, we haven't, we haven't sprayed yellow yet, so. And the mayor suggested a while back, it should be nice to peel some of this, some of this buildup of sand and dirt along the edges of some of these main travel roads. That get built up over years of pushing the, the sand up with the snowplow. And, uh, um, it's a pretty daunting task thinking about skimming all that off and then having to reseed grass. Um, we talked about maybe doing a test run, probably the worst stretch right now is on Roosevelt from the railroad tracks to the school driveway headed west. It's really thick and the grass and weeds really overhang that curb that I paint yellow all the way along there. So I thought for a test run, if you think it's alright, I might take the skid loader up and no one lives right in front of it. You know, that's that big triangle, lot of, of ritzies there. Um, I was kinda hoping to, to just go up, get up there with skid loader and try skimming that excess off. And maybe catching the hydroseeding crew when they're here in town and see if they hydroseed it back and get a rough cost estimate on what it would take us per block to do that kinda work. Um, it'd be a good test.
I think we've done that before.
Yeah.
Use the broom and dustpan. Set your skid loader on there and turn the broom on and just drive, dig it right up and there's no mess.
Oh, really?
There's still gonna be a mess, but it's not as bad as just using the bucket.
Just, oh, so you, you basically rake it all with the broom?
And then the cutting edge and the sweeper, the dustpan will cut the sod out.
Oh, we don't have sweeper anymore, we sold it.
Oh, we'll scratch that out.
Yeah. Yeah, well, that's true, cause we sold it to Walker, maybe we can get it back.
What side are you talking, are you talking north to south?
The south side.
Okay, I thought that's what you were, but.
Yeah, it's really bad, we've spent, oh, we spent hours trimming back weeds the last time we painted that curb yellow, because it was overhanging that curb so badly. I, I burned up an entire roll of string, string trimmer, train, uh, string, trying to clean it up and I didn't even get it all done. I wound up going to A1 and renting an edger and you, running down that with the edger, but the edger didn't even work, cause it's filled up so high, the blade on the edger couldn't get all the way down to the curb. It's, it's that bad, so, and there's other areas too, on Main especially, that could use that treatment, but. Um, I figured that's a, that's a good test run, I think I can keep the cost to a minimum doing that. And then we'll know what it would cost to do a block of that kinda work if we wanted to continue with it next summer or whatever.
As I just mentioned it, the guy, cause I said, we got a nice, nice street now, but now we hit, you know.
You might be opening up a can of worms there, because not everybody's gonna wanna do it.
Well, yeah, I thought of that too, and that's also why I thought that stretch is a pretty good stretch, cause, you know, it doesn't get real good maintenance from the property owner anyway. Maybe if we clean that one up, it'll get a little better, uh, maybe, you know?
It's a test run.
It's a test run, it's, it's.
Might not work, might work, so.
It's as, as much of a neutral area as you can get in town, I feel, you know, to, to try it on, so, um, may try and get that done too. But, uh, moving on to, um, let's see, oh, one other project I'd kinda like to do this fall. And maybe we should've got our act together and, and had Kleesner do it while they were here, but where the paving changes on Roosevelt near where the new sidewalk is. There's holes along the edge and that is just seal coat, that is not an asphalt surface, it's seal coat. But, we're, we keep losing the edge of that road, I keep dumping pothole patch in it and it doesn't last. I'm wondering about saw cutting it square, digging it down about five, six inches and going into Marion and getting, uh, hot mix. And hiring Marty to come roll and put it in there an inch at a time and basically just make an asphalt patch in that area. I mean, it might just be pushing the repair down the road a little bit, but it's, it really is getting kinda bad. Any opinions on that?
What was the location again, I'm sorry?
It's on Roosevelt, past Third, headed west out of town, where the pavement changes. You know, it goes from concrete, concrete to seal coat. And, uh, on the south side, that south edge, it just, it's not good, I think it gets soft in the spring, I think it holds a little water there. And, you know, I'm talking about a, probably a fifteen or twenty foot long by four foot area would catch all the bad. There again, it's kinda be an, an experiment, if we could pop that in there and, and make that last for a few years, then maybe next time, you know, we catch our breath here. We could do a little asphalt work out to where the county put the concrete overlay in, you know, uh, or something. But, uh, my, my goal is to prolong that road and keep it viable as is as long as possible. I can put numbers together, you know, probably still could be done in, in October, if you want me to just get a, a rough estimate on what it would cost for next council meeting. Um, I could do that.
It's the permanent fix pavement?
The permanent fix would be to pave it or, or do a, a full five inch asphalt treatment all the way through. I mean, it's not a really long stretch out to where the county put the concrete overlay, but it would, it'd take some bucks. I mean, I guess if we'd wanna heal up from what we got done this summer first before we tackle it.
We had, we got a price for that, it was.
I'm just wondering if I can, yeah, if I could do it myself i- in a patch form, basically would just hire Marty to come in with the roller, you know? Cause I can, he'll let me rent his mini to dig it up, you know, and we got the skid loader to, to clean it out and we got a dump truck, you know? I could, I could probably haul one dump truck in and he could roll it while I'm gone getting the next one, you know, so.
The rest of that road out there is friggin' shady, isn't it?
Yeah, it really is, just that one area that's.
Just the one area that's cracking.
Yeah.
Isn't it the same one that we've always had the problem with?
That's where I knew where that patch was, it's been ever since I was that tall.
I just think that maybe five inches asphalt rather than patch after patch after patch on an inch and a half of, 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 uh, seal coat, maybe we'll stop it. Like, like I said, maybe they'll just push the problem farther west, I don't know, but I'd like to take a crack at it anyway. I think it'd be a pretty cheap, cheap way to extend the life of that road until we can really do something with it. I can put together numbers unless you don't want me to waste time doing it.
Well, like you said, something's gotta be done with it.
Yeah, I can get some numbers together and be ready to do it right after the October meeting, you know, if, if you're okay with the numbers that I get.
With Marty and that?
Yeah, I'll just find out, get an idea of what he would cost, get an asphalt price and then try and estimate some hours, you know? So, we got.
He's pretty busy right now.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, well, and he might even just say, you come get the, the mini and the roller and you do it, you know, which is fine with me too, I, I don't care, that's absolutely okay.
Yeah, why don't you do that?
Okay. Um, alright, and past that, everything else seems to be holding up and doing well, the, the construction is obviously, uh, been the focus of most of my attention. Um, the manholes that they're putting on Main Street, I think could be an issue. Um, Kleesner's never used this Iowa wall signing to do manholes after a patch before. Um, it's not been going good, obviously, it's taken a very long time, Kleesner has estimated that they'd be in and out in about three days. And they've been here about two weeks now. Um, they used a rotary cutter to cut through the asphalt and concrete and every time they hit a rebar, which we don't know that there's rebar there, we can't tell them that. It, when the rebar got hit by that ro- spinning cutter, our concrete is rotten enough that it started breaking the concrete instead of shearing off that rebar. If that rebar was indecent concrete, that cutter would shear that rebar off. So, hence, we've got broken concrete right under the edge of the hole and it pushed some of the asphalt up, didn't wreck it, but pushed it up. Um, after the fact, they went back with their plate packer on the end of their excavator and a lot of it pushed back down pretty nicely. Um, and some of it has not. In the process of cutting the holes, they didn't realize it when they were doing it, but their skid loader dug into our new asphalt because of the torque of that rotary cutter. And so now we got tracks in our new asphalt that aren't terrible, but yet they're noticeable.
Some of them are pretty deep.
Well, they are fairly deep, some of them are a good half inch deep or more. They did plate pack some of those and I called Craig Kleesner down to look at it. He thought if we put a plate pack around those skid loader marks and he says it'll heal, the traffic will help it to heal. You know, he said it'll kinda heal itself if we kinda compact it a little bit, so that's what we did. And now I, I know he's gonna tell us we need time. The next issue is the first three concrete fills that were poured, there's a lip. They poured the concrete a little bit higher than the asphalt. Don't know what's gonna happen there when we start hitting that baby with the, with snowplow. Aren't we just gonna shear off the edge of the concrete and everything's gonna be A okay, or are we gonna break a chunk out of it? I, I don't know. Um, the, Craig Kleesner asked the crew to pour a quarter inch low on the rest of these, well, I don't think, they went a quarter inch low. There's some that are, are merely flush, but I didn't see any of them that are below the asphalt surface. And they didn't get all those ripples out from the cutter either. You, you know, I wanted to just stop them and say, hey, we need this right before you pour the concrete, but we've been torn up here on Main for two weeks already. And I feel like in the end, a couple of those holes, the fix maybe to saw cut a diamond out like the other crews would do. And, and cut out what they put in and pour in a bigger diamond to replace that. So I feel like, once they're done and we can drive over them and determine how rough they are and how much of a lip there is. We need to have a meeting with Craig Kleesner and, and see how we proceed from there, that would be my recommendation.
Even if we don't meet on a lot of them, and I was noticing, it looked to me like there's gonna have to, around where the asphalt and the concrete leak. It looks to me like there's almost gonna have to be a hot tar mix or something to seal those up, cause they're, it's not, it's not, they're not pretty.
Mm-hmm. It's.
I mean, pretty meaning, they're gonna leak, they're gonna, water's gonna go down, freeze, you know, it's gonna happen then.
And we're way smoother than we were with pothole after pothole, way smoother.
Way smoother, yeah.
That's awesome, but then if we, you know, I know it's not gonna be absolutely perfect, any playtime you have a manhole, no matter how hard you work at it, you're gonna feel it when you drive over it. But we don't need to start out with a rough rippled edge over that, over that manhole, time and weight will take care of that for us, will give us that effect down the road. I don't feel like we need to start after brand new construction with that kinda thing. I, I feel like we can, we have some leverage here to put Kleesner's feet to the fire on this and I feel like we should, um, and.
I, everything looks better, but it needs to be right in the end.
Yeah, that's the way I feel too.
Begging for it, it needs to be right.
Yep, yep, I agree, so, I guess, um, I guess stand by, I'll stay in touch with the mayor and maybe we'd have to, we might have to call a special if. If we go a week down the road here, you know, give it a week's worth of traffic and, and looking at it and then give Craig a chance to come and look at it. You know, if there needs to be, um, action taken, I, I would, I think I'd want Craig to sit here with you guys. And explain to you guys how he's either gonna fix it or trying to convince you that it's gonna be okay. And I'll be here to back you up, but, you know, uh, that's the way I feel we should proceed, um, on that operation. And I got pictures of, I took pictures of all the, the holes in their worst state after they've been compacted a little and made a little bit better. And I've got pictures of the, of the tracks in the asphalt and, um, so, it's, it's documented, it's.
They've scarfed it with their bit several places. Around, they was to set the bit down too hard or whatever and they've scarfed the asphalt.
Yeah, and I mean, stuff happens, you.
It does, but.
You could drive through town with your pickup and lose a concrete block out the back and put a little dent in it.
And I would, I agree, but I'm also not the contractor, I'm getting paid to do the job.
Well, and the other thing too, that is, it is what it is, but Iowa wall sign came in with little or no traffic control. They had about ten orange cones, they came into town with that and I'm sure some of you may have heard complaints that first couple of nights, they left their equipment sitting in the middle of the road. And most of it was to block fresh poured, they poured those first three holes and they left the equipment over it to, to block it. But, if I hadn't put our cones with reflective tape on it, I, I'm sure people would've run into some of that stuff, you know? After they've been to the bar and at midnight, heading out of town without any kind of reflective of any kind. Um, I was very unhappy with that, I, right now, I think ninety percent of the cones we own are out there blocking their stuff. So, that'll, that I will address with, with Kleesner too, because he hired them to do the job.
Make sure we get our cones back.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Well, I think we're in the driver's seat here, I don't think we should let him take advantage of us.
Yeah, yeah, and I would definitely withhold pay on that.
Right, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, yeah, so do we need a motion to, we, you and I should've talked about this first, was that in the consent agenda?
Yeah.
We better take it out.
Why don't we put the check in the mail?
Well, yeah, I don't know how you need to do it, but if you need a motion to, to remove that from that list, you better do it now.
The motion I'll make, the motion I respected earlier, I made motion to withhold the check with Kleesner until we talk to him.
Okay. Motion been made to withhold the check, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Chester's after you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, okay.
I think we're down to the, to the, uh, uh, agenda item for signage?
Sign again.
Okay, um, I think we're all in agreement, we wanna go new signs on Moodheart and, and the Willow, the third, Moodheart Main, Moodheart and, and, uh, Third. And then there was a separate sign pointing to Willow because of the, of the change. That sign, it just, it, it's a sign that says Willow and has an arrow and points to the west down below the, the other, the sign that says Moodheart and Third Avenue.
Well, I, I brought up if, if we could do the whole city, but that's gonna be a mayor council decision, but there, there are plenty of other signs, I know Naylor, your street is bad.
Oh, yeah.
I did drive around a little bit in the evening and looked at some of them.
Yeah.
We could get by, but it would be nice to replace those that are unreadable in the evening and.
Yeah, yeah, and Sharon and I talked about that too, if you want us to go ahead and compile a list, um, we basically, if I take Sharon along so she can record. We'll, we'll hit everything that, that needs addressed, one of those stop signs on, on Moodheart, one end or the other is so faded, there's no reflective to it whatsoever. And going a little deeper than the street signs, there's a crosswalk sign down here that is faded beyond belief, cause it's been facing the south all these years. If we put a crosswalk in at Moodheart, we probably oughta get a pair of crosswalk signs for that area. Um, and then, oh, there was something else. Um, it's different than the street signage, but, and I, I know I don't need to provide signage for these crews that come into our town, that should be their responsibility. But, I'd like to, we bought a couple of detour signs, I see now how useful they've been, I'd like to get a couple more of those and a couple, uh, we don't have any signs that just say road construction ahead. Um, I'd like to have a couple of those, so like entrance to town when we've got something going on like this, I can just set that sign up and say road construction ahead. Little things like that is starting to, after, with all these projects going on, are starting to like, oh, hey, it'd be nice if we had this.
Well, if you're doing the work out there on the end of that road, you better have some signs up.
Well, yeah, there's a perfect example.
Ahead, just for that. I'd just go around town and figure out all the signs that you're gonna need, just like you said, and then figure it out and we'll go from there.
Yeah, we can rent some signs from Beeline if we, if we, if we're doing a project ourselves that's out of the normal, but these signs I'm talking about are stuff that we would use on a repeated basis, so, but.
You wanna add One Main Road ahead to those?
Yeah, I've got a, I've got a left lane closed ahead and a right lane closed ahead.
They're technically, that's outdated.
Oh, really, it's supposed to be?
Because people don't know left and right. It has to say One Main, I'm serious, it has to say One Main Road. Have you ever gone to traffic safety class?
No.
You should, you really should.
Okay, alright, I promise, well, well, can I?
Come on to the city with roundabouts.
Yeah, thank you.
I feel like I should bring this up, I don't think anything's gonna come of it. Uh, a gentleman from central city came and tracked me down in the middle of the day, the other day. Uh, a gentleman from said city came and tracked me down in the middle of the day, the other day, and asked if I knew who's skid loader bucket was down by D and D Auto. And I was standing with Borsch Brothers at the time. I think he was maybe assuming it was there and it's like, no, it's not ours. And I said, well, I'm sure it belongs to the manhole crew. They're getting ready to cut that manhole right at that area. Well, they put it in the wrong damn place and my wife hit it. And I said, okay, so how is that our, is, are you saying that's our fault? Well, yeah, they should've put that farther off the road. So it's on the road. Well, no, it's, it's on the driveway. Oh, it's blocking the dri- well, yeah, we just got our car out of the body shop. And she hit it and she scraped all the way down the side and there's paint still on the bucket. And I said, so this bucket was not attached to a skid loader or anything? Well, no, it was just laying there on the edge. I got pictures of it. And I said, so you're looking for somebody to pay for your car? Well, yeah, I think, I think someone should pay for that. So I said, I'll go take pictures so I can document it. He followed it down there. The bucket was not touching, it was a foot from the asphalt edge of the street. And it was eight inches from Dan, uh, McMurren's concrete driveway coming out of his business. Um, and they were moving the rest of their equipment down there to start working. And she just cut the corner too hard and, and scraped it. And the paint was on the, on the bucket. But he was adamant that someone was gonna pay for that for his wife's car because that bucket was left too close to the driveway. So if anything comes up-
My question is why was the car in there to begin with?
Uh, well, I may have made a comment that you're asking someone else to pay for your wife's poor driving skills, maybe. That's like a legend. So, anyway, if it gets brought up, that's what happened. I have pictures of that too.
I saw you. You were very diplomatic, as I went by waving and smiling.
Yeah. So, uh, back to the signs, um, uh, would you like us to get a list together of what we think needs to be replaced around town and, and then get a price from IPI? Cause it will probably amount to a fair amount. It could be a couple thousand dollars, I'm guessing.
We were guessing from the line, wasn't it twenty-two thousand, fifteen hundred to two thousand?
Hundred, yeah, fifteen hundred.
Hundred, to two thousand, and that was just street signs.
Yeah, so you add in a few crosswalks, a couple new stop signs, stuff like that.
Well, I love our poles and-
Yeah, there'll be a few poles and-
They need to be placed.
Yeah.
What is the, uh, I can't, I can't bring this up. It's not on, never mind, forget it. I'll bring it up next meeting.
It's up to the council, but I'd hate to see those old Mootheart signs go up, back up on a brand new street if we don't have to.
Yeah, I think we can, I know.
They're bad.
Oh, they are. They're terrible.
They're not moving them that far.
No. I mean, I could, I could put the, set the poles, put those signs back up just until the new ones come, just so people know what the street name is. Cause it's just a matter of climbing up and unbolting the top and, and replacing with the new signs. So, um, if you don't want them up at all, we'd have to put place in order almost. I mean, if you could say, let's get, um, should we just order Mootheart and, and Third Avenue and Main Avenue signs and get them coming? I don't know if they, if they have a discount for having them in all in one group, or if I tell her-
Well, there is a shipping charge, you'd be paying a different.
Oh, unless we send somebody to Anamos to pick them up.
I don't know. That project's a material reflection of what we've accomplished. I just hate to see old signage go back up on such nice work.
Yep.
Are we on poles?
I've got a lot of, of the street sign poles there.
I, I just was curious. I figured we had some, but-
I'd have to, I, I'm guessing I'd wanna order a few more, cause we'll wind up using some to get this job done. And I don't wanna be without them, just like last winter, somebody cailed one down here at the end of First Street. I gotta have some around.
Are they the balsar, poles, poles, metal poles or?
Metal, they're just brown metals with, what we use around town is they're just,
Brown.
Just brown metal poles with the, the cast piece that sits on the top. That's what is currently in use. I wondered too about, to save one more thing to mow around, if on the intersections that have stop signs, if we wanted to go with our street signs on top of the stop signs. I've seen some cities do that. If you're interested in saving having a pole in the ground, that can be done too. You just lower the stop sign down about two holes and then get the, the square mount, um, sign holders and put on top of that square post. Um, save, like I said, one hole in the ground. We could take that into consideration as we're going around town and looking too. But if there's nothing wrong with the pole, there's no reason to go rip it out and then have to fill that hole back up either. So only in an area like on Mootheart where, you know, cause there's stop signs on both ends of that street that need to go back in, we could, we could go with signs on top of the, on top of the stop signs rather than putting in a separate street sign. If everybody's okay with that.
Sounds good.
Yeah, corner doesn't also a lot.
Especially on Mootheart where we don't have as much right of way and the sidewalk is closer to the street, especially now that we widened it.
The other thing, those square poles are nice is if you have the receptacle buried in the ground and you get one broke off.
Mm-hmm.
It's not a big deal to, you just pull the old piece out.
Yeah.
Could've been doing in, and you're good to go.
Yeah.
If you're gonna order square poles though, see if you can get on the DOT's bill.
I got, I had a, I got an email on that, yeah. Yep.
Cause I've hit one of your signs, square poles.
Oh.
I straightened, I straightened it a little and got another one put up after I hit it.
Oh, if we could just train everybody else to fix their own screw up, which is great.
So you wanna make a motion to have them go get new signs?
Was he gonna order them or is he gonna get a list?
Do you, do you wanna see a total or do you want me to just get signs? I mean-
Do I just wait till we get them all or?
Well, that's up to the council if you wanna replace Mootheart right away or the, Mootheart and Third, I'd like to see that done. But, um, it sounds like you wanna go citywide and determine what we need first.
Yeah, yeah. Cause obviously we don't have to put new ones out in Naylor's addition. We don't have to, you know, some of them don't really need replaced, but, I mean, I could ask, I could call the gal at IPI too and see if she'll let us, you know, get those first few in and not dang us, make it, just say, hey, the rest of the order's coming. It would probably only be a shipping issue. There'd be a few dollars extra shipping to ship it in two parcels.
It turns, it turns into a big issue. I'll go pick them up myself.
Yeah, yeah, right. Somebody's gonna drive towards it.
I'll be having to drive up there, yeah.
Yes, sir, mayor. I make a motion to order the new signs for the Mootheart, third, what, three or four and a couple stop signs. And are you gonna wanna get the crosswalk signs right away also since you're gonna be putting those in? And the crosswalk signs. And then the other order after once we get the list.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second? Charlie's seconding it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay.
Are you going square poles on these new ones or not replacing, doing anything different? Square poles like for the stop signs?
Yeah, I know, and in fact, those poles are good. There's nothing wrong with them. I'll probably just replace stop signs cause they're faded out.
Okay.
Anything else for maintenance?
No, no, I mean, okay.
Anything for guys?
Any questions?
So we can move on.
Call me when you're meeting with Kleisner.
Okay.
Yeah, you can do that to me too.
Okay.
Call me if you, yeah.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, uh, let's go with number five, review golf cart ordinance. Set public hearing.
Is this a public?
Nope, this is a public hearing. That's a public hearing.
No, set, no, set.
Public, I apologize.
We just had the correction.
Yeah, the, uh, your packets, Sharon sent this off to the, um, city attorney, thank you. And, um, there was in your packets, there, there's some notations there that, um, it's the attorney Brian Dayton had reviewed this and he noted in sections forty-three oh four, uh, and forty-three oh nine, there was, uh, language in there that, uh, he wanted to reconcile. Uh, so what I've brought for you is version five of our, uh, golf cart ordinance, which does reconcile that language. In previous versions, which are noted in his notes here, that's why I didn't print off the previous one. In forty-three point zero four, it stated that golf carts may be legally parked in designated, uh, parking areas. And then you'll notice in forty-three oh four, that was the last line. That line is now struck. And then in forty-three zero nine, it stated, uh, parking prohibited. Golf carts shall not be parked on city streets, sidewalks, or alleys at any time. That is common language in the, um, in the, uh, ordinances, which to, to me, I, I thought it made sense, but I can also see, uh, what was, what he's saying. And I think it was brought up, uh, by members of the council before. I thought we had it clarified, but, uh, the attorney knows best. That's what we pay them for. So if you look at the revised version now, uh, it is clarified in forty-three zero nine, the same language is there about you cannot park it on a city street sidewalk or alley. And for clarification, there's both the state law and the ordinance, make it clear that you can't have it on the main through street. And the ordinance goes farther than that and actually names the streets. Um, so they couldn't park anywhere in a parking spot anyway on the main streets, so. Um, but further than on the second sentence now, it says golf carts may be parked in designated parking areas or not prohibited by law. That expands it now, uh, that not only the parking spot, but that there was now or ever in the future, uh, additional signage that changed, um, the parking areas such as prohibited times, um, handicap and things like that, that covers that as well. So, um, found that in another golf cart, um, uh, ordinance that addressed a similar issue with it. So that reconciles the issue between forty-three oh four and forty-three zero nine, miss sir.
I'm not necessarily understand a lot of this, but I've got a fair bit on it. So we're gonna treat the golf cart pretty much similar to as a motor vehicle. So if I have a golf cart, we have, let's say, a handicap parking spot on one of our roads that this golf cart can, and I'm handicapped and I'm in my golf cart and I put a sticker up, I can park my golf cart in that handicapped site. We're gonna treat it like a motor vehicle.
Well, golf carts are governed under three twenty-one, two forty-seven of the state code on that. And, uh, that handicap sticker usage, I believe, you're taxing my police mind now, uh, it doesn't apply to that.
To a golf cart.
To the golf cart.
Hey, but not only if it says, it says parking vehicle sticker. Only reason I know is my wife has one.
A golf cart and a handicap sticker?
No, no.
I'll be happy to-
No, but I'm just saying, is I can see, I can see somebody that's handicapped pulls up and parks in a handicap spot. We don't have any in town. I'm talking down the road.
I initially had a handicap sticker and, or, or a handicap ticket in some time, but I believe under those administrative rules, they are issued to the, the person with the, with the vehicle and it doesn't include golf carts, but-
Okay, that's fine. No, you're-
I'm pretty sure that's the case.
It, it is issued to the person, cause it can be transferred-
The placement to the vehicle, the, the, the-
That that person's in, it can go to my pickup, it can go to my daughter's car.
Yeah, you can move the vehicle, the vehicle with that one digit to the person.
Cause it has their name on it.
Correct.
Okay, that's all, just clarification. Thank you.
I guess we're looking at-
I, I go ahead, ready, then ask you to register vehicles though on the golf carts.
Okay, that's fine. I just, you were mentioning the handicap thing and I thought, oh, I just will ask.
So I guess we're looking at these changes and if we wanna go ahead and implement an ordinance for golf carts, uh, we need the council to look forward and set a public hearing.
Can we set a public hearing like at the next meeting or do we have to do it sooner or later?
We can set it next meeting.
I make a motion, we set the public hearing to discuss the golf cart ordinance for, for the October twelfth at our regular council meeting.
I'll second it.
Motion made. Motion seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, mayor.
Motion carried. Okay, so we'll have a public hearing on golf carts the next meeting. Okay, let's go to that. Let's go to resolution, approve street, street finance report. The, um, resolution oh nine, days two oh one seven, days one, approve of the street finance report.
This is, this one always, it keeps track of, um, DOT is what we give this report for. And they wanna know how much money is spent on roads and repairs and such. And with this one, our seven hundred thousand dollar bond, ninety percent of it is related to the road. Cause you can count the streets, you can count the storm story, you can count the sidewalks, but you can't count the water. So going through Borsch's bid, about seven, seventy thousand dollars was water, so that's ten percent off. So we have ninety percent of the seven hundred thousand is road related. So then on the first column, the street debt should be, we're paying for that three different ways. We've got road use, local option, and then either reserves or whatever. So we had to divide that out. So the street debt actually comes to two hundred and fourteen thousand two hundred, which would be the percentage that we will be paying back with our road use money. And our other street money is four hundred and fifteen thousand eight hundred dollars is the money literally received in from that bond. So on the other side, it looks the same way in reverse, what you're spending out from the street debt and then what you spend out from regular money. And it shows that we'll have an ending balance of one twenty-nine, seven sixty-four. And our data tech ending balance is one twenty-nine, seven six three, eight seven, cause everything is rounded up. It also keeps a list of equipment we have. And this is just basically, they have a list of the DOT. If you were looking for, okay, our city wanted to buy the tractor like we have. You can go through the DOT list, see who has one, you can contact them and see how well they liked it, did it work for them. So the road equipment inventory sheet is more or less just something they keep on their website as an informational thing. But it shows we got in eighty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents in road use money left. And then this is what we're using, twenty-five thousand of these each year for bonding on the road.
Okay, so we need a motion to accept the-
Is there a, a regular printed resolution zero nine, twenty seventeen dash one?
That comes with a report.
Okay, so there's not like a regular word, person, it's just this reporter?
Right on their regular sheet that comes off the-
I make a motion that we approve resolution oh nine, two thousand seventeen, dash one, approve the street finance report.
Motion's been made, we approved the resolution. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
And second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Moving on. Your package, you got future goals. So, uh, look at that for next, you know, next month and then upgrade this and fill it out.
Do you wanna, do you wanna submit these to you before the meeting so you can compile, you can compile your one, two, three, four, five like we did?
You don't sign them, don't?
No, that's fine.
We want to explain all the blame. Yep.
Yeah. Thank you.
Alright, so let's try to get them in at least a week before. Okay. Okay, transfer of funds.
We've done used up all our bond money. Plain and simple. Um, with Borsch's bid, this payout was ninety-five thousand four hundred and four ninety-one. Our street project, which was our bond, we put in six hundred and ninety-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars. We've got sixty-two thousand, one twenty-two nineteen left. So we pay that, so the thirty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars will be coming out of debt service because last May we put two hundred thousand in there from road use. Okay, so we take the thirty-three thousand, three sixty-two out of there. And the Kleisners was one forty-nine, five hundred when we write the check. So at least a seventeen thousand, one thirty-six out of our two hundred. And that says we've probably got sixty-five, sixty, sixty-five thousand left to pay.
Yeah.
So we're gonna have to transfer money from somewhere. Um, I'm looking at our general fund. We have a hundred and sixty-two, seven thirty-four. And normally in the past few years, like April, we'd either transfer money to reserves or transfer money to the fire department or we've always done transfers. Well, this year we didn't, knowing we may need the money. Um, so usually those years when we transfer, our September balance, one year is one oh three, another year is one oh one. Um, so usually those years when we transfer, our September balance, one year is one oh three, another year is one oh one. So, September, we like to keep about a hundred thousand dollar balance. So, I would feel comfortable that we could either transfer sixty thousand on the general. We still have a hundred and twenty-one eight in road use or we still have a hundred and fourteen thousand one fifty-five in local option, which is designated fifty percent tax related, fifty percent infrastructure. So, how would we like to transfer more funds into any of these projects?
Do you want to?
I'd like to see, uh, the general fund, whether that would be Mr. General Fund or be the STEM's and ASB's in the past years.
Well, and then anything extra in there, because next June we'll be making payments. So, we transferred twenty-five from road use, we transferred twenty-five from local option. And the remainder, we had planned on either using general or reserve. So, if we put it in there now and have, we have too much, we've already got it in there for it to make that payment.
What's our general fund right now or?
One sixty-two, seven thirty-four.
So, we need about where we're usually at. I think that's a good idea.
And that's why we didn't transfer earlier this year because we knew we probably needed.
We trust the council there?
Money's money, it just has to get moved around, so.
Have a resolution for next month.
I'd like to make a motion and then we take the money out of the general fund.
Yeah, the resolution.
Yes.
Do we have a next meeting?
Did you see you wanted to make a resolution?
Yeah, I'll do a resolution for the next meeting.
He just asked me to do that. We're gonna do, we'll do it next meeting, okay? Alrighty, that's what we'll do. Letter of support to STEM, best grant.
Yeah, Matt brought this down Friday. He said it was kind of a combination of other support letters he had gotten.
Do we, do we, you want the council to sign anybody's name in there?
Uh, yeah, I do have one in here that is on, written on letter.
Do you have the council sign it too?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I have one in here with letter that I can pass this to.
Okay. If you guys wanna do this or?
All we're doing is saying we support projects, not necessarily financially or giving them some or whatever.
All right, okay. Yep, if you wanna sign that, go ahead and sign that.
Is there a specific place you definitely sign it?
We need a motion on that, don't we?
Oh, let's do it.
Let's just do it, let's have a motion on it.
I make a motion that we sign the letter for STEM project.
Okay, motion's been made. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Ryan, second. All those in favor?
Aye. Yes, kids.
With that, we need a motion to the chairman.
I have a big motion to the chairman.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.